Good evening. I'm calling the special session, April 13th at 5:32 to order. General protocol, City of Villa Park Council welcomes you to this meeting and encourages your participation. Regular city council meetings are held on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 6:30. However, as stated, this is a special city council meeting concerning the housing update. On March 12th, 2020, and March 18th, 2020, Governor Gavin Newsom enacted executive orders in 25-20 and in 29-20, authorizing a local legislative body to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and make public meetings accessible telephonically or electronically to all members of the public to promote social distancing due to the state and local, due to the state and local state of emergency resulting from the threat of novel coronavirus or COVID-19. In accordance with executive order in 29-20 and in order to ensure the safety of city council members and staff and for the purpose of limiting the risk of COVID-19, in-person public participation at public meetings of the City of Villa Park will be limited during the time period covered by the above referenced executive orders. Instead, members of the public can view the meeting on television, Spectrum Channel 3, or AT&amp;T Channel 99, or live stream on our city's website. To speak on any item on the agenda, please complete a speaker's card located at the entrance to the city council chambers and give it to city staff, and either city staff or I will call on you. Also, questions or comments could have been submitted by 3 o'clock today to info@villapark.org. And with that, we'd like to ask Steve to please call the roll.
Hey, Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilman Pitts?
I think you called me.
Yeah, I did.
Here.
Okay. Councilman Racini?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zimmerman?
Present.
And Mayor Miles?
Present.
All present. And staff include on Zoom, Ray Pasquale, the planning manager, Todd Litfin, city attorney, and I'm Steve Franks, city manager, present. We also have Alyssa Manassero here as staff assistant.
Thank you.
Staff analysts, I'm sorry.
Mayor Protem Zimmerman, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would be delighted.
Please stand. Place the flag. Hands over our heart. Ready to begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. Do we have any public comment on off-agenda item?
No.
Okay. Before we get started with new business, I wanted to say a little something about the purpose of tonight's meeting. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review potential housing options through zoning and other planning targets and to receive public comments from interested parties and residents so that the City of Villa Park can provide direction to staff regarding moving forward towards submitting and completing our required 2021-2029 housing element update. Our final goal is to meet the October 15th, 2021 HCD zoning requirement to meet our assigned RENA, or Regional Housing Needs Assessment, number of 296 housing units. I want to point out, as I have received a few phone calls from residents concerned, that there will be high rises in Villa Park, that we as a city do not have to show an action plan to meet our housing element update due in October, and that the housing element is not a development mandate, but rather we must show we as a city can absorb our allocated RENA numbers such that the city cannot be the impediment to a housing element, and we need to demonstrate that the city could meet the needs of any of the seven categories of potential households assigned to the housing element update through these zoning and planning targets. And this evening, there will be, we don't need to vote on anything this evening. Hopefully, at the end, we can all agree on the next housing element public meeting of May 11th, but we'll get to that later. So, starting with new business, number one, 2021-2029 housing element update. Steve, would you please give the report?
Thank you. I'm going to do this in concert with Ray Pasquale, our planning manager, and John Douglas, our consultant, who are both are remote. So, we have a PowerPoint presentation for the record. It will be showing it on here, but we will also put it on our website and make it available to anyone who's interested down the road. So, we have the PowerPoint, and I'll let John kick it off and give sort of an overview and where we're going from here and what's going on. So, John, do you want to take it away?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Franks. Mayor and city council, good evening. It's nice to be with you again. We have been talking about the housing element. This is the third public meeting since December, and so much of this will be familiar to you, but for those who may be tuning in to the housing element for the first time tonight, I'm going to just recap a few of the basics that we are required to follow under state law. So, just a quick housing element overview, the housing element's part of the city's general plan, and we are required by state law to update the housing element every eight years, and that eight-year period that we are working on, the housing element now, extends from this year out to 2029. And all of the various elements of the general plan have to be consistent. Next slide, please. So, just a very brief overview of the process. Back in mid-December, the city council reviewed a draft housing element and authorized the staff to submit that draft housing element up to State HCD, Housing and Community Development. And then, in February, we received back a letter from State HCD itemizing several changes that the state will require in order for the city's housing element to be approved by the state. Then, there was a second public meeting held last month on March 9th. That's not shown on this chart, just an oversight. And tonight's meeting is the third public meeting to discuss the draft housing element. And then, there will be an additional public meeting in May for the council and the community to weigh in on the update to the housing element. Then, once the city council reviews that revised housing element, we will be required to submit it back up to HCD for a second round of comments, and then we will receive another comment letter from HCD. And then, following that second comment letter from HCD, we will hold a public hearing for the city council to consider the adoption of the housing element. The due date that every city within Orange County and the SCAG region is required to prepare an update for the housing element is October 15th of this year. And then, following the adoption of the housing element, the city will carry out implementation measures over the next eight years of this planning period. So, that's the quick overview of the process. Now, let's go to the next slide, and let me just refresh your memories on what the key requirements are under state law for the housing element. The first key requirement is that the city has to demonstrate that the city's rules and regulations comply with state law with respect to persons with special needs and various types of housing, such as accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. And the second key requirement in state law is that the city must demonstrate that its land use plans and zoning regulations could accommodate the amount of housing that has been assigned to Villa Park through the RENA process, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And we discussed that quite a bit at the last meeting. Let's go to the next slide. And so, this RENA process begins at the state level, and the state assigns a share of the statewide housing need to each region. In our case, that's the Southern California Association of Governments. And then, in turn, SCAG develops an allocation plan such that each city in the region receives a share of that regional housing need. Now, what's important to keep in mind with these RENA allocations is that they are planning targets, and they are not a development mandate or a quota. And the way the housing element law works is that the city must determine the potential capacity for new housing in the city based on current plans and development regulations, and then compare that capacity to the RENA allocation that's been given to the city by SCAG. What state law requires is that if that potential housing capacity is not sufficient that could accommodate the amount of RENA, then the city is required to amend its zoning regulations to create additional housing capacity such that housing could be built to achieve the RENA number. But again, the city is not required to build that housing, and the city is not required to achieve that RENA number. It is a planning target. Finally, it's important to keep in mind that, under state law, the city cannot obtain a certified housing element unless we show that there is sufficient capacity to accommodate the RENA. And let's go to the next slide, and I want to say a word about that word certification. What does that mean? So, the state legislature has delegated to the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, the authority to review local housing elements and issue their opinions as to whether they comply with state law. And that review for compliance, we refer to as certification of the housing element. So, if the city receives a letter from HCD saying that the housing element complies with state law, then that is considered to be a certified housing element. Why that is important is because there are numerous consequences when cities do not achieve that housing element certification. For example, state law authorizes the Attorney General to bring lawsuits against cities that do not have a certified housing element. In those litigation, litigations, the court can impose fines, it can award attorney's fees to challengers, and it can order changes to the city's local regulations. It can order zoning changes, it can order projects approved, basically usurping the authority of the city council with regard to land use. It can freeze the issuance of building permits until the city comes into compliance with state housing element law. So, I think you can see from these various potential consequences that are laid out in state law, achieving housing element certification is a very important objective for all cities in California. Next slide. Now, at the last meeting, we talked about the actual RENA numbers, what's been assigned to the city, and what the city's current capacity is for new housing based on the general plan and zoning regulations. And we showed that the RENA allocation for Villa Park over the next eight years is 296 housing units, and those units are distributed amongst various income categories that are specified in the RENA. And based on existing zoning, we've estimated what the current development capacity would be of the city. And this chart summarizes what that capacity is for different categories. For example, single-family lots, we've estimated about 25 additional single-family housing units could build on those lots. In some cases, that would require the subdivision of large lots to create smaller building sites. There is also a capacity for about 28 multifamily units in the town center, and this is the result of a zone change that was adopted a few years ago by the city council during the last housing element planning period. And those potential units exist on the properties at the northeast corner of the town center that occupied by City Hall, the library, and the office building next door. Then, there's also a potential for accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. And we've estimated that if the city approves approximately 10 units per year over this eight-year planning period, that that would generate about 80 ADUs. Now, that ADU figure is a, you might say, a ballpark estimate, because we don't know for sure how many ADUs are going to be approved in the future. So, that is our educated guess as to ADU production. Now, you add up all of those potential units, and you come up to about 130 or so units, give or take, which leaves us with a shortfall compared to that 296 units in the RENA of about 160 units. So, our challenge, our key challenge as part of this housing element update, is to identify what are the appropriate options for creating additional housing capacity in the city so that we can demonstrate compliance with state housing element law, adequate capacity to accommodate the RENA, and get a certified housing element. So, what we have been doing, your staff and I, since the last meeting, is we've been looking at potential options, and we want to show you a summary chart that we've put together for your review. And this chart summarizes our opinions as to what some of the options might be for the city council to consider that would generate additional housing capacity in the city. So, let's walk through those one at a time. And I'm going to zoom in so that I can see this a little better myself. So, the first option, the first two options on this chart have to do with the town center. And the first option there would be to allow a higher density on the two parcels that are already zoned to allow mixed-use or multifamily residential development. And we've just used as an estimate increasing the density to allow 40 units per acre on those properties. So, those two properties comprise about 1.4 acres, and so that would generate an additional 28 units approximately on those two properties. That's in addition to the capacity of about 28 units based on the current zoning that allows 20 units per acre. So, that's option number one. Option number two would be to amend the zoning for the entire town center to allow 40 units per acre multifamily or mixed-use development. The town center is approximately 11 acres, 11 and a half acres, and so if that option were selected, then there could be a potential for about 460 multifamily housing units in the entire town center. Then, we also looked at other possible properties around the city. The first option on this chart is the Tropical Plaza Nursery that's along the east side of Santiago Boulevard. That property is about 1.3 acres in size. If that property were rezoned from single-family residential that it is today to multifamily residential at 20 units per acre, then that would generate a potential for an additional 26 units towards the RENA. The next option that we considered has to do with reducing the minimum lot size on properties that are currently vacant or underutilized. And when I say underutilized, I mean that they are developed at a lower intensity than what is allowed under the zoning. So, for example, those vacant and underutilized properties, if they were rezoned to allow 8,000 square-foot lots instead of larger lots that the current zoning calls for, there are about 11 of those underutilized lots that we've identified, and that would generate about 45 additional units if the lot size were reduced to a minimum of 8,000 square feet. There's another option that we looked at, but we really haven't been able to quantify because it is just, it's a little bit too vague. We would need more specifics, and that would be to reduce the minimum lot size on other, more developed lots in the city. For example, a lot that has a single-family home on it, it's not so large that it could be subdivided into two or more lots. And so, that option would be reducing the minimum lot size to create the potential for additional units to be built on those lots, or depending on what minimum lot size was selected, it could possibly allow lots to be subdivided to create additional parcels. Another option that has been suggested is look at the school properties or Unified School District. There's four schools, as you know, in Villa Park. If any of those schools were to be closed and declared surplus property by the school district, then it is possible that the city could arrange for, or encourage those to be developed for additional housing. But it's a little bit too speculative at this point for us to estimate how many units that would generate. It would depend on which school, whether the entire school site or a portion of the school site were designated for housing and so forth. But that is an option that we considered. Then, there is another option that we looked at for 10 lots fronting on the east side of Wanda Road between Aberdeen and Collins in the southern portion of the city. There's 10 lots in that stretch of Wanda, about two acres total. So, if those properties were rezoned to allow higher density, that could generate somewhere in the ballpark of 10 to 40 additional units, depending on the density that was selected for that zoning. And then, the other location in town that we looked at is in the east side of town, along Villa Park Road, on the north side of the road, which is adjacent to Santiago Creek. And there are two properties out there that are owned by the Orange County Water District that we've looked at for the potential for reclaiming those properties and developing housing. This, again, these are owned by the Water District, they're not owned by the city, but they are within the city. So, the city has zoning authority over those properties. There's two adjacent properties, they total about 22 acres. And so, depending on the portion of those properties that is usable for development, we estimate that there could be anywhere between 120 and 900 units approximately on those properties. It's a wide range of uncertainty because more specific studies would need to be done in order to determine exactly what type of developable area could be had on those two properties. And then, the last option is with regard to accessory dwelling units. Now, you remember in the previous slide, I estimated that if the city were to generate 10 ADUs per year, then that would yield 80 units over the eight-year period towards the RENA. So, if the city were to choose to encourage additional ADUs by relaxing the development standards, for example, allowing more than one ADU plus one junior ADU per lot, then that could generate more than the 80 units that we estimated on the previous slide. But that, we haven't put a number on that because it would depend on the specifics of the zoning regulations. So, that is the summary of options that we have looked at at this point, and we would like to have your feedback on that. And before I wrap up here, let's go to the next slide and just talk about next steps in the process. So, as the city manager mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, it's our intent to receive feedback, comments tonight, and then schedule a subsequent public meeting for May 11th to continue the discussion and to seek direction from the city council. And then, after that, as I mentioned, we would be required to submit the draft, the revised draft housing element, back up to HCD to get their input. So, that concludes my presentation, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Very comprehensive. What I'd like to do, council, with staff, is to go through on page eight, each one of these options, see if there's any public comment related to each one, and have the council as a whole weigh in. Again, we're not having to vote on any of this stuff, it's just to get feedback, ask questions, hopefully get the public to, you know, jot down notes that they can then participate by asking questions or sending emails, or there for everyone out there, there's nobody here for the meeting this evening, so we have no public comment in-house here. But maybe we can just go to the first one, if you have questions for John. And then, Robbie, again, we can't see you, so if you have a question, could you please kind of call out, so that way I don't want to not be able to recognize you if you have something you want to say.
Thank you. I can see all of you. I see you on Zoom, but I don't know why.
Oh, wait, I think we're going to get, Alyssa's working her magic, she's going to share the screen, so isn't technology grand. Hey, I can see you.
That's why she's here.
That's why, that's why she gets, that's why she gets the job done. Okay, so, Steve, can you let us know if there was any public comment on specifically this first item of the rezoning, the commercial professional parcels to allow 40 density units per?
No, we have received no public input on any of these options at this point. This is sort of the introductory
Okay.
...presentation to the public, so I wouldn't have anticipated them. But that's the point of today, is getting them out in the public. Over the next 30 days, we would hope that we do hear from the public regarding those options and any others that might have been, might be presented. So, at this point, we're still, it's very early introducing these, and sort of we wanted to get the numbers out there and what we estimated and what it could be. So, that's sort of the menu, I believe, that in the past, several of the councilmen said, have suggested, and many of them, their ideas are incorporated here. So, please, please keep in mind, these aren't just staff's ideas, these are input from, Councilman Colacott has been very, very helpful in coming up with ideas and presenting those. So, much of these chart, the chart are ideas that we're putting out there. So, it's very early in the process, but we don't have any comments at this point. I hope we get some.
Okay. So, sticking with, we're going to go through one by one. If anybody has a question on the, on the first portion, the rezone, the parcels to allow 40, did you have a question pertaining to that, or?
No, I had a question for the city manager. Will a, for each of these options that are identified, will I?
Staff be preparing a narrative describing in more detail what our intent is and describing what the option consists of, so that the public can better understand what we're proposing?
Yeah, we can do that. I think some of, there's a lot of work to this, so we want to, you know, I mean, if there's an option that isn't going to be considered at all, we'd like to eliminate that from the effort, because I mean, if there's something that we're totally eliminating, I mean, we could spend a lot of time and write a lot of narratives that go nowhere, so I don't want to have times. But certainly, yes, we can prepare narrative explaining each of those items. And we certainly can answer questions. Hopefully, at the end, we would hope that anybody, and you'll see when we talk about any, the city manager, the city planner, and our consultant are available, we can obviously answer any questions to the public over the next 30 days, whatever. So, our hope is to answer those questions, and we'll try and do that, yes.
Okay. So, notes, there's no discussion right now on the rezoning, the first one, the town center rezoned for the density units increasing to 40. Everyone's kind of at that
So, for clarification, just for clarification, that reflects the city hall and the office building that was part of, inclusive of the prior housing element.
Which already.
That was, that was 20 units per acre, and that was the, I believe, 20, right, wasn't it, John?
25, maybe?
Yes.
20, yeah, 20, and I think that's included in the previous slide would tell us where we are. So, that's, that's included, so we're already counting that. So, this would be adding on. So, just real quickly, John, just for clarification, if we were to go to 40 units per acre, how tall a building would that have to be?
Most likely four stories, four to five stories.
One.
Pardon? Chad, did you have something? Oh, sorry. Comments on rezoning the remainder of town center? That means all the rest of this, right? The whole 11 that includes Ralph's and?
Again, that would be the remainder, and Again, that would be the remainder, and that would be at 40 units per acre, so you just imagine it's a three to four story plus retail or whatever would be associated with it, so it would be a combination, retail residential.
Okay. Councilman Colacott?
This would not mandate that the commercial buildings be redeveloped, it just would be permissive to allow them to develop to that level, correct?
Right, as you, as we've stated previously, this is a, this is not a development mandate, this is a planning target that we're attempting to reach capacity, to have the ability to do such, correct?
And just to have it on the record, personally, it might be offensive to some of the neighbors behind us, allow them to weigh in on that, but there's no requirements per se that we would have to have a three to four-story building. It could be a two to three-story building or some sort of combination and get a portion of the units met.
You're correct, right.
I just want to make sure we have that on record so that there isn't an immediate visceral reaction.
Right, and I think that's important, too, that, that these projects, as most every project is, are built with private developers and what they're going to propose, and the city may have some stake in them in some way, shape, or form, but they certainly aren't the guiding element. Some cities have, when they used to have redevelopment monies, they used those to develop those. There was a whole set aside that was used for housing, 20% set aside, that's long gone, so that isn't happening anymore. So now it is typically what a developer would come in, and that would have to work with the owners, obviously. The owners of the property are gonna dictate. The city cannot dictate the private owner do anything at any level.
Thank you.
So, so to build on Vince's question, if the city, if this is all private land, and let's say that the owners got together, we, let's pretend that we went ahead later on down the road, and it's part of our housing element, and the city town center could be, you know, or was rezoned for this, you know, high, high-density, low-income housing. To follow up on Vince's question, the city can't decide for the developer whether it's two-story or four-story, right? I mean, the developer is the one that would decide whether or not.
Typically, what a developer, John or Ray, correct me, but the developer's gonna come forward with the proposal, and that would be, as long as it's within zoning requirements and zoning codes that we have set forward, that would be, you know, we would have issues that we would have to potentially approve, but I don't believe the city has decided if it's two or four-story or whatever. We could put height limitations on it, I believe.
That's my question.
We could put height limitations, John or Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, please speak up, I want to make sure I'm not misquoting here.
Yeah, Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the general plan basically sets up the framework for what could be built in terms of units in the town center. The, the development standard would be part, parcel of the zoning ordinance, so that would be another step in the process where, you know, it could be in the form of a specific plan or development standards that are specific to the, the town center, which would also, which would include, of course, you know, the density, of course, and also parking as well as building height. So, yeah, that would have to be developed, you know, in concert with, you know, whatever, whatever city council decides to pursue in the, the housing element, if that makes any sense.
But again, I think what you want to remember is that we're trying to hit a target of 296. So at some point, if you say, well, we're only gonna allow it one story or whatever, then you're gonna curtail the amount of potential units that could be developed there. So there's, there's sort of an equation we're trying to work at here, and if we're adding the units, if we take away the potential, then you're gonna get less units here, you're gonna have to do something else, more of something else, potential.
Check my math here, real quick, if I may?
Go ahead.
So if we have these two lots zoned for 20, and the current plan is we need another 160, this allows for 460, we need about a third of this, which even if we did 20 units and then a smaller portion of the lot, would get us the 160 without going to a 460, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, like, misinterpreting this.
You're not required to do maximum to get what the potential is, I mean, you're allowing, and John, again, help, I mean, you are, you are, your zoning has to allow for meeting the RENA target. Okay, so if we can reach 296 and you don't have to, your development standard could be something less that doesn't let them develop the full 460, or whatever number it is. 460, again, is an estimate, assuming 40 units per acre, as I believe, right, or 40 units per acre. You don't have to allow that, I mean, you can do something lesser than if you're trying to get to a lesser number.
Thanks.
That's destiny.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Well, I, for the record, hold on one, sorry, sorry, Robbie. For the record, I am, and I've expressed this, not a fan of turning this town center into a commercial or professional residential area for many reasons. I understand that there are many different ways that we can allocate our RENA numbers and absorb our RENA numbers, and I'm, I'm, I'm looking, you know, at all these other options as well. I don't, I, I don't want to put all our eggs in quote-unquote "one basket," and my concern is kind of what you had said, Steve, that if we limited, you know, some of the zoning requirements or the height or design, not design, but the height, and ended up that a developer couldn't meet the RENA number to do this, then we've completely transformed the town center and didn't meet the RENA number anyway. So I personally don't care for that idea, but, Councilman Pitts?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Question for you, Steve and John. We go through this process, we develop the plans, we all think that, you know, we'll meet the RENA numbers based on the options that we choose. Is there any type of measurement or scorecarding that's done by HCD over a period of time that might force us to readjust these numbers, or are they just allowed to pursue that?
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I believe every year, just recently, and Ray submitted a progress report that you all approved and we submitted, so we're required to submit progress reports, this is something that's monitored. So at some point, they're gonna want to see progress, what the actual expectation will be as a measurement. I can't answer for HCD, maybe, John, you have better insight in what they'll be expectation, but I believe they're going to expect progress. So if you tell them eight ADUs per year, let's go for that, and you, you produce two, then they're not gonna, they're gonna say, well, that, you need to adjust something here, we're gonna, we're gonna go back to the, back to you on that. So their, the expectation is that you're gonna do something, and you're gonna meet it. But I mean, what that is and what the expectation, John, help me on this, what, what would be the progress measurement that they would probably call for?
Yes, in terms of rezoning, if the city were to choose one of these rezoning options and amend the zoning for various properties, then HCD, when they review the housing element, they would issue an opinion as to whether that would comply with state law or not. And then if they, if they did find it in compliance and we got a certified housing element, it is possible that over the next eight years, if development does not happen, that HCD could require that we revisit the housing element. It typically does not happen very often unless, the most recent case that I'm familiar with is Huntington Beach, where the city basically downzoned, as I understand it, downzoned some property that they had committed to in their housing element, and then when they were called on it, they declined to reinstate that higher-density zoning, and so that's when a lawsuit was filed by the Attorney General. So, yes, I mean, it's, it's difficult to predict what could happen over the next eight years, but I, I think the biggest question mark is ADUs, and that is if, if the city estimates that we're gonna generate a certain number of ADUs, like the city manager said, and we don't come anywhere near to that, then it is possible that HCD would require us to reopen the housing element and go through the process again.
But I also, I also want to, based on what you've just said, it appears that we've got to be somewhat realistic about these options in terms of future, because it could be that some of these may not be implemented, could not be implemented for whatever reason, and now we're stuck back to ground zero. So I just think we, as we look at these options, making sure that we believe that we can implement these things effectively over the course of the next eight years or so, so that as we are monitored, we are showing and making progress. So, that's the only reason I bring it up.
So for the ADUs, Ray, what is the number for last year that we had?
Um, I think we had about, between six and eight, and to date, we've issued eight building permits since January.
So we're already at the eight, for 2021, we're already at eight?
But can I comment, too? I mean, again, going back to, we don't have to build these, we, the city does not have to build these ADUs, we just have to make it easier and accessible. So back to the point of what happens if we go ahead and use ADUs as part of our RENA number allocation to meet the RENA numbers, and we don't end up getting the eight per year, or in two years, we don't end up getting the eight per year, as long, as long as we are demonstrating that we are providing incentives, or maybe we provided, like, pre-approved plans or whatever, wouldn't that satisfy HCD enough to where, I mean, we can't make people build ADUs on their private property, right, John? I mean?
That is, that is right. The city can't force anyone to build anything on their private property.
So then if we're gonna use ADUs as part of this number to meet these allocation numbers, and we don't get the target of at least eight per year?
I think one of the things, one of the things we do is, you talked about incentivizing, we haven't done that so far.
Okay.
So if we do do incentivize, that's a different look that the HCD would have, saying, well, maybe the city has done things now, whereas, for instance, we're receiving eight already since January, and we haven't done any real incentives, if you will, they're just letting them comply with state law. So if we were incentivizing, in whatever way that would be, I mean, waiving fees, you know, pre-approved plans, whatever the case may be, that may be what HC might expect as some sort of remedy, or at least, you know, next step, if you will, I think that's sort of.
Right, so to Bob's point, when he asked if staff could kind of put together a plan on how we would achieve each of these, you could include something like that, right? Incentivizing ADUs, pre-approved plan checks, things like that, right?
I think that was on the previous slide, that was, yeah, that was one of the things we've mentioned.
May I only bring it up because there, I think that we have to be flexible in, in various options that we have, I don't think one-size-fits-all necessarily will do us, because if we don't meet those numbers in that one-size-fits-all, like, ADUs or whatever, then we'll have to come back and revise it at some point in time. So that's the only reason I bring it up.
I agree.
Just make sure we're realistic about what we're suggesting, and then put that plan around whatever we're suggesting around more realism than other things that may run us into trouble down the road.
I think for, just for, for the record, if there, there were any real fatal flaw and that developed, I think the city, and the city had only relied on one option, that's gonna be problematic, and you're gonna have to go back. So I think it's gonna have to be a mixture. We have had several conversations with many of you about that, that it's not gonna be one, one solution is gonna just work. It's gonna have to be, and HCD is gonna have to see, well, you've done this, you've done that, and you've done these types of things. If we were to do one project or something, and then, say for instance, that there was a fatal flaw, it couldn't work out, that's, that's, HCD may say, no, that's too uncertain.
Too limiting?
Too un, you know, so, so I think we're gonna have to candidly be able to be like the Councilman Pitts said, just flexible and have some ideas about where we're going as a combination. I think Councilman Colacott, you and I had the discussion the other day just about that, that we're gonna have to have a variety in the, in the.
I agree, and that's probably why I'm not real happy with the town center rezoning. Councilman Colacott?
I have a question for John Douglas, but first on your comment. I'm more opposed to any, any element that may disrupt our existing neighborhoods. We have a long, one of the characteristics of Villa Park is we have a number of people that have lived in this town for decades, and I think it's our residential neighborhoods that we should be more focused on trying to retain some stability in than the town center. It's the residents that voted us all into office, and those are the people that we're most responsible to, not the, not the merchants and the property owners of the town center. But getting back to my question on to John Douglas, John, my understanding is that the governor's goal for additional housing is 5 million by 2030, is that correct?
Yeah, it, it's in the millions, I don't know if it's five, but that, I think that's a reasonable statement.
What I'm trying to understand is, for sure, is what, you know, how do we get to the 296 allocation? Is this 296 allocation reflective of the governor's goal for new housing?
The, the short answer is yes, it reflects the governor and the state legislature's belief that we have a housing crisis, and so we need to take drastic measures to address it.
Okay, so the 296 allocation is considered, in simple terms, Villa, what's considered Villa Park's share to helping the state meet this 5 million goal by 2030. So there is a little bit of a horizon that we're looking at, you know, since the statewide goal is to meet this by 2030, would it not be reasonable to assume that there's an expectation that we would achieve our 296 by 2030?
Well, that's the hope. I mean, it, the RENA is a planning goal, and the hope is that as many jurisdictions will achieve that goal as possible.
Okay, thank you.
So back to your point, Bob, about, you know, the residents, I think it makes it even more important that the residents weigh in on this, and I, I know you represent certain residents, as do I, and the people that contacted me actually do not care for the idea of rezoning the town center. But that being said, again, it's important that the residents weigh in on these issues so we can get that feedback, yes.
I've had just the opposite response and question. In the committee meetings that you two have had on this, what had, what kind of input has come out of that? Has there been any public feedback?
So I'll answer that. We have not had committee meetings because this is something that the whole council has to address, not just us two. So it's been my decision to wait on any meeting between Councilman Colacott and I so that we could have it addressed as an entire council.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion or questions on town center possibility of rezoning? Anyone? Robbie, anything?
Yeah, I just, I agree with you, I don't want to see, I don't want to see high rises in the town center, I'd like to look at other options.
Chad?
So, I guess I'm the tiebreaker, is that how it is?
But we're not, there's no voting.
We're not voting, no voting, no, we're not voting.
We're not voting. It needs to be made clear, we're not voting.
Yeah, no voting.
This is not a voting thing, I was, sorry, that was, it's supposed to be humorous. So I am of two minds on this, so first of all, we came to Villa Park looking for a small town, and the town center is what I picture a small-town town center looking like, and I don't want that to change. I don't want any of our residential areas to change because that's what a small town looks like to me. So for any of these, it's gonna be swallowing a pill that I don't want to see happen, and I'm looking for the least impact on the fewest number of people.
Thank you. All right.
I have an additional comment.
Oh, yes, sir, sorry.
I echo your, your sentiment, I, I don't think that high rises are an adequate or accurate term that would describe a live-work-type environment, that's not at all, I think that's a complete misnomer, I think it's disingenuous to even say that. I think intelligent, well-designed architect, architect and engineering-type projects that we've seen throughout Orange County have demonstrated that they're not high rises. I think that we would be remiss at this juncture to even have an opinion, candidly, because we have, this just got out there. I think we're remiss in even having an opinion this direction or that direction, I think we need to hear from the public.
I agree.
We have gone through a tremendous amount of work, we have embraced what the state is requiring, what HCD is requiring, we want to make sure we get as much buy-in from the public as possible, but I think there are numerous examples of live-work developments that are sensitive to the community, and I think we have to be extremely mindful of the housing that we have in our community right now, and mindful of traffic impacts and other things, and look at all options, and perhaps, or it sounds like we're leaning towards a variety of different options to satisfy this 296 requirement, and I am concerned that- And I am concerned that if it is not a actionable project or at least a possibility of an actionable project, we're going to have issues. And I think that a number of these, if not all of these, are actionable projects, but we've got to meet that number. I think if we've, I think if we're naive to say that that number is not their minimum, then we're, we're in for a rude awakening. So, um, I'm interested in a lot of these, but, um, this last one here is, uh, or the second to last one is very interesting. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, everyone done with the town center rezone discussion? Uh, Tropical Plaza Nursery. So is it possible to do the map for, um, those people so they can?
Yeah, well, that's why Alyssa's here, because, yeah, we did prepare them and you each have hard copies, but.
Yeah, just so anyone watching can, can get a, a clear view of what we're speaking of.
The hard copies are more difficult to zoom in on though.
Hold on just.
That's when you take a picture.
Yeah, I.
Tropical Plaza, right there, the third, number three.
I like Zillow also, at least with the property map lines and the.
There.
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so the, 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 um, land in discussion is, um, right there off of Santiago Boulevard. I guess that would be to the southwest of Santiago Boulevard. Is that correct?
Ray, you want to?
It would be southeast.
East.
Southeast. Well, there you go. Um, and it's all the green area there, so, um.
All the what area?
Not the green area. That's a field for Serrano Elementary. So it is, um.
Oh, the one up meets?
Yes.
Show me on here. This one.
It says wolf har, wolf horticulture.
This is the elementary right here. It's this right in here.
It says wolf horticulture, if you'll see it on there.
Oh, right, 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 right. Sorry. Oh, that is southeast then.
Southeast of, yeah.
All right. Councilman Colacott?
Yes, uh, this area is bisected by the, uh, SCE high tension wires. Uh, so there's a, uh, an easement that excludes a good portion of that parcel from residential development, correct?
Yeah, that's why you see it's only has 26 units. It's not, it's.
Okay, but the aerial photo does not show that there, that there's a part of it that's excluded by the, um, high tension.
Well, the eas, it doesn't reflect the easement on there, no.
Okay, I think that'd be helpful for people to understand the, the, what this alternative includes and excludes in the boundaries of the property. That could be overlaying on the, uh, the photo for future discussion.
Anyone else have comments on this one?
You know, I was looking, I was looking for the, because, um, on the other properties, um, there is a Southern California easement, right of way that cuts through, uh, a lot of the properties, including the ones that are on Villa Woods Circle. But this one doesn't show it. Um, we'll have to take a closer look at it. I was looking at some county maps and it didn't show that same easement cutting through it, but that doesn't mean that it doesn't. So we'll just need to take a closer look at it and look at maybe some other maps. But, um, Councilman Colacott, you're, you're correct. I think the, right at the corner, there may be, um, it may clip it a little bit. Um, but I don't know if it's the entire, um, Tropical Plaza Nursery that's under the easements.
Go ahead, Bob.
No, it's, uh, it's not the little, there's a little triangle on the, right, right near the meets in Santiago intersection. That is a sep, I believe that's a separate nursery.
Yeah.
The, uh, the transmission easement is right under where it says wolf hold, horticulture, I believe. And that's, uh, there are two white buildings that are probably, uh, greenhouses, but it's a, a pretty significant swath that goes right between that triangle and the larger, uh, property on the south, which is Tropical Plaza. Uh, and, uh, um, City, Mr. City Manager, I, um, we discussed this before and is there a, a limitation not only underneath the easement, but are there any, uh, residential development, uh, limitations in the, that, uh, adjacent to the easement because there's, because of the existence of high tension wires?
Yeah, Ray, Ray, go ahead.
Yeah, um, yeah, the, um, the, the restrictions are pretty, I mean, very, very restrictive. Um, I've seen some documents, um, that were prepared by, um, the, by SCE and it's, it's pretty restrictive. They, they don't allow for any, uh, permanent structures to be built, um, under the, uh, the power lines or within the easement area. And I would be surprised that if they even allowed it, um, that at any point in time, Southern California Edison can, um, have you remove it at your expense, of course. But the documents that I've seen, um, in the past have been very, very restrictive in terms of any above-ground structures that can be built under the easements.
So would it be possible to, um, get a, a true, exact?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take, we'll get that.
Okay.
That, that was not the question. Uh, Ray, let me restate the question. We know that underneath the easement, uh, that you cannot build habitable structures. However, the question was, um, is, uh, are there additional limitations adjacent to the easement, but on, on each, for example, on each side of the easement that would further restrict the type of develop, development? For example, could there, uh, uh, could you, might you build commercials there but not residential? Or, uh, anyway, are there any other limitations when you're adjacent to a high tension easement?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Anybody else?
The, the suggestion was not under the high tension, but apart from it. And the 26 units are in the area outside of the easement, correct?
My understanding is that nothing can be built, obviously, within the easement area. Outside of it, um, I don't know of any restrictions, um, as far as building.
But the 26 are outside, not under, correct?
The 26.
Units.
The 26 units.
That's, that's what our belief is. We'll verify that.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, I, I think when we look at this and I'm zooming in, trying to figure out exactly where those power lines are, but maybe it's just the parking lot area might be what we're actually talking about, where the 26 units would go.
We'll, we'll have to verify exactly.
Okay.
That's a good action item for, um, the next meeting in May, to be able to get clarification on this and see if we need to update it or reduce it as far as the potential ADU or the potential units. Okay, next one, as long as we're all done. Um, reduce minimum lot size for vacant, underutilized lots to 8,000 square feet. And so there's a map with that one as well or no?
No, I don't think, Ray, we did a map for that, did we?
Mm-hmm.
No.
No.
So would this be, um, this is only for, for vacant lots? Would be, would qualify for this or is this, you're rezoning all sorts of different lots? What would, I guess just the 11 lots that are available?
These are lots that, um, were vacant and also lots that had the potential to be, uh, divided, to have two or maybe three lots. And then there were some lots, uh, that were, some of the 11 lots had homes on it already.
So are these mostly like acre-sized lots or half-acre lots?
Let me, let me see if I have the list here.
Maybe the addresses would help us.
Okay, um. Some of them were less than an acre in size. There were, uh, and they range, Mayor, um, between three acres to about a half acre. And I do have that list. Um, we can provide it to you. I, it was a list of all the 11 with the, um, associated parcel numbers as well as the addresses that were assigned to those, uh, parcels.
We should make that list public now.
Yep, leave it up.
Exactly.
Okay, was one of those, the, um, the, the lot that's at the top of where, uh, Center and Valley intersect?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody on, on this? Robbie? No?
I, I have a comment.
Yes.
So I'm just going to put out there that I think this is a, uh, one of those few times where the word slippery slope really applies, that once we change the zoning on a residential lot out in the city, it is not going back. There's not very much likelihood that anybody's going to buy multiple properties and then ask us to rezone them as, I mean, that's just, it's so unlikely as to never happen. So I just want to at least state that these, these decisions we're making right now, they're not going to be necessarily be reversible. There's really so little chance that we'll change one of these lot zonings and then be able to say, oh, you know what? That's not a great idea. Let's go back. It's just not going to happen. I, I know we all know this intrinsically. I just want everybody else to know that we know that and that we're taking this very seriously. This, this really is a, a very long-term, one-way direction that we're headed and it isn't a direction that I know any of us particularly like. I just, uh, God, I look at that and I think, yeah, that's not, it makes me really uncomfortable, so.
I think, I think you're, you know, as, I don't know which one of you said it, but it, maybe it was you. It was, you know, this is, this is, um, it's, it's uncomfortable for, um, a lot of people and there is no one, um, answer that's going to make everyone feel good. So I think it's great that we are all discussing this and again, hopeful that community, um, communicates some of their likes and dislikes with this, but please remember that just because if we change the zoning on something, that doesn't mean that that private resident, um, is required to do anything with it. So we cannot make anybody do something to their property irrespective of if we change the zoning or not. I hear your point, Chad, but I kind of, um, just want to make sure everyone knows that if we change the zoning on a three-acre, um, privately owned piece of land, that does not indicate, um, that tomorrow it's, you know, sold off to build a whole lot of, you know, condos. Bob?
Question, um, let's say we've got a three-acre parcel that's currently zoned E4, uh, the state lot size or zoning. If we, uh, and it, let's say it's currently undeveloped, uh, that does not, uh, the owner can still develop, um, six half-acre lots instead of, let's say, a bunch of smaller lots.
When you say undeveloped, what do you mean undeveloped?
Just real quick, I'm getting some, if, if I could ask you to speak a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can't hear.
Let's say we've got a, this, uh, three-acre lot, uh, that was discussed and, uh, it's currently zoned E4. And, uh, uh, if we reduce, if we reduce the minimum lot size to 8,000 square feet, so you now have a number of, you know, potential lots, that doesn't mean that, uh, the owner can't, uh, instead divide it, subdivide it to, uh, 20,000 square foot lots. It doesn't mandate that they, uh, subdivide it if they choose to develop it, that they, they're mandated to develop it as, um, a bunch of 8,000 square foot lots.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. No, that's, it's permissive. It's not a requirement.
Okay.
That's, I, I think, Ray, is that what, that would you, how you read the question?
That's, yeah, that would be, that would have been my response.
Permissive, not, not required.
Okay, that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Chad, you were going to say something, I think.
Oh, that was it.
Next one?
Next one is, is sort of a carryover of the following one. If you do it for those lots, you could do it for all the other lots, other lots. We don't have any real, there's no map because you could do it for whatever number you wanted to. You could say the, the minimum size is this or whatever. So for all lots, so you could do it. So there's no way for us, like John said previously, where we can estimate a number there because, are you going to designate any, anything over acre above? You can now have minimum lot size and subdivide or whatever, you know, whatever. So that's, we sort of would need that sort of, to get a calculation, it's sort of like, it's just a big black hole at that point.
So then from a feasibility standpoint, HCD probably would not accept that as.
They would need more definition.
Okay.
They would need us to say anything three acres and above or two acres and above or whatever, the, whatever number parameters you set, you would need to be definitive. We would, I didn't, need to identify those potential lots and what the potential capability would be on those lots. So what potential capacity could be permissively developed on those? But until you, until you designate, then we can't even identify the number of lots because there are 2,000-plus units here in Villa Park. So we'd need to, to hone that number down.
Okay, so, um, as part of this discussion, how, how do we?
So I would, I would approach this one not as looking at specific addresses. It's sort of, this is one that definitely gets at the character of, do you want larger lot sizes or do you want smaller lot sizes? This is sort of the character question of, do you want this and, or is this something as a general rule that you're willing to go for to move down to smaller lots? And if you are, are you going to only say that those that are large enough or, you know, that can get down to a smaller level or whatever? So that's what I would say. This is sort of a, a philosophical question. Do you want to require certain lot sizes for certain zone designations or not? You know? And, and do you want to adjust that? Because you recall that several years ago, we went back and readjusted and figured out the R1s and E4s and we remember we had some of those adjustments, uh, that we cleaned all that up so that we had consistency in the zoning code. Um, that would be adjusting the zoning code. If you want to do that, you can do that, but that's sort of a policy discussion that you would have to have.
You guys want to weigh in on that? Bob?
I'll have to give that one some thought for next month, uh, next meeting. Um, initially, um, considering that we have, uh, a couple of other options for meeting our goal, I, I'm not, um, real keen on this option.
I'm not real keen on all of them, sorry.
That's true. There's one I'm keen on, but.
Just putting it out there. Okay, um, Robbie or Chad, do you have any kind of comment on this one?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, the OUSD surplus property, that one.
Those are identified there. There are four schools, two elementaries, a junior high and a high school. You have these four stars you see on there. It's important to note that unless they're declared surplus, we have no real control over the zoning of that. We, we can zone them, but the city, I mean, the school district board can simply disregard that by simple vote of their school board.
Isn't there a law that says that we can't, um, take the school property for city, it's not even ours to?
Todd, why don't you tell the, the specific reference?
Before you do that, Todd, I just want to say, the city, the school, OUSD grounds is, is not even ours to be able to rezone, correct?
Well, that's what, Todd.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mayor, council, uh, all zoning authority within the city is vested in the city. So you are correct that the city does not own the property like it doesn't own most property, but it does fall within the city's zoning ambit. Now, the question is, what is the enforceability of that zoning power? And, um, for school district property, you know, the city could zone it whatever it wants, but the school district in essence can ignore the city's zoning. So if we were to say this property, uh, Villa Park High School cannot be used for a school. It must be used for residential. The school district under the government codes, uh, sections can simply vote, uh, on a forfeit basis, saying, no, we reject that. It's still going to be a school. So. that. It's still gonna be a school." So, at the end of the day, the school district controls the use of their property for school purposes, and there's nothing the city can do about that.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this one needs to come off because, I'll get to you in a second, Vince. I think this one needs to come off because I think this looks like we're grabbing at straws. And if HCD sees this, and HCD is obviously gonna know what we can and can't legally zone, and the feasibility aspect of it, there's no way that a school is gonna allow us to put extra housing on their grounds. So, along with Bob's comment of asking for further clarification on the feasibility of some of these, I personally think this one needs to come off. Vince?
As the largest landowner in Villa Park, correct me if I'm wrong by acreage, I think it absolutely has to remain on there because we have to have that as part of the conversation, knowing full well that there's not going to be a home, there's not going to be a unit, there's not going to be one of the 296 developed on it. But we also can't predict the future of OUSD. They, they're a very large landowner within our community. As Todd said, we do have, still have some sort of authority, although it's virtually null and void when you, it kinda cancels itself out. They need to be part of the conversation. I think they, we should, as a city, send them a letter, make sure that we have invited them to the party, and see if they have any future plans, not just by telephone, but in writing, because every single time this topic comes up about affordable housing, the one group that I hear, and there are a number of groups, one group off the top of my head is teachers and educational professionals not being able to afford housing. Well, let's allow the school districts to be a part of the solution, at least from the standpoint of including them in the conversation. They may, they may have plans that we're not aware of. I don't know that they're gonna move a school over here or move a school over there. We have four schools in a city with 6,000 people and 2,000 homes. That is a tremendous amount of educational real estate within our community. So, I think at least from checking the box perspective, we have to have them as part of this conversation. So, that's my only comment on that. I agree, there's probably not gonna be anything developed on those in the future.
I did, at a staff level, have a very recent conversation with the Assistant Superintendent and his staff, and at the, it was the superintendent deferred to him, but they...
Can you speak closer?
I'm sorry. They specifically said that they had no intent of surplusing. In fact, they have population in these four schools that are pretty high, and they have no problem with putting the kids here. So, that, they're no problem with population at these four schools. So, they have no intent of closing any one of them, and the facilities are heavily used in their mind, and they're for that purpose. So, they intend to remain as, in the near term, and they're planning, capital planning, which they're doing right now. I think they're doing a project planning. They have no intent of adjusting downward the size or scope of any of the four schools in Villa Park. Furthermore, they did talk about surplus property, and it would be their discretion about what they use. Now, if you're familiar with the Peralta Junior High property, that's right on the other side of the orange, it used to be the Orange Mall, I still think of it the Orange Mall way, but whatever it's called at that point, on Tustin. The Peralta Junior High was closed years ago, and at one point, the school district proposed, and they had a, they had a proposal for some affordable housing or some condominium units. The community came out in droves and said, "No, we don't want it. We don't want high density in there. We won't let it happen." So, the school district backed down completely, and there is a, there is a very strong resistance or reticence, maybe reticence is a better word than resistance, to going out to any sort of facility like that for surplus property. And again, it would be, you know, their, how they got rid of the property would be up to them, and that's, or what they did. So, I think that's, they're very strongly opposed to anything, and I, you know, obviously, we can try and get something in writing from them. I'm not sure they'll put it in writing, but I'll be happy to do so. But they don't have any inclination to move in that direction.
My recommendation is just to invite them to the party. If they choose not to participate, then that's on them. That's all.
One other thing about that just came to mind. If pretending, I like to do the pretend, play with me here. If we even did, or were able to use the OUSD grounds to fulfill the housing element update requirement, that would annihilate almost all of our community programs, because right now, those school grounds are used for our Little Leagues and our, you know, flag footballs and different group youth sports. So, by doing that, we have no place, since we have no park, we have no place to...
I'm not aware of anything that's really significantly done in Villa Park Elementary. I agree with you, Serrano, Saravella, and the high school, but Villa Park Elementary, as far as using their grounds for after-school activities, is negligible at best. I'm not saying that that school should be touched in any way, shape, or form. I'm not saying that school is going to be touched in any way, shape, or form. Just clarifying the record.
Well, thank you. And I think our responsibility of showing capacity and demonstrating to HCD feasibility, I agree. Let's get maybe something in writing that says that they don't wanna participate, but I, I think it would look, in my opinion, maybe John can offer something else. I think it kinda looks bad if we're encroaching on land that isn't ours to encroach on. But, John, if you have anything to add to that or take the fifth?
I would just add that if the city chooses to put one or more of the school properties as a site for housing, then HCD would ask for evidence that the district intends to surplus the property and is moving in that direction.
So, basically, it's gonna be a waste of time for us to even can put it on there.
Well, I think until we get, if we get something in writing from them, say they have no intent to surplus, then I think we have sufficed and met the goal that Councilman Rossini was asking for. We've invited him to the table. They've said there's no, they're not in the game, and I think that would be what you're looking for, isn't that right?
That's it. That's all I'm asking for.
Are you comfortable with that?
That's the only thing I'm asking for. Nothing more, nothing less. Please.
Councilman Calacut, did you have a call?
Yes. There was one other facet of that discussion on the, the school property. Both Steve and I had, came up the same idea of contacting the school district and saying, "Wait a minute." You know, again, as Councilman Rossini pointed out, one of the target groups for this, for low-cost and affordable housing are teachers. And certainly, the Orange Unified School District is the largest landowner and the largest employer in the city, and they have a number of teachers. And they have some areas on their campuses where, you know, with a little imagination, perhaps they could do a mixed-use type of development. So, anyway, I understand that the school district was approached, and they said, "No, no, we don't wanna do anything like that." But I think that in whatever we submit to the, to the HCD, we should show how exhaustive we've been in trying to identify alternatives that could contribute to meeting that 296 goal. And, you know, even though Orange Unified School District said, "No, that's fine. We'll just identify that we approached them." They said, "No." Okay, so that's, you know, that's now not part of the solution, but it's part of the effort we made to, in good faith, try to meet this 296 target.
Yep, and I can understand your point, and if we could get a letter, then you're right. It checks off a box, showing that we have tried to exhaust all avenues. But for the record, not, not trying to beat a dead horse, but when you say that teachers are one of the groups, although teachers do need to have affordable housing, they are not listed as such in the housing element for one of the households, and there are seven of them. I just wanna read them. Housing needs of households and persons with special needs, including persons with disabilities, persons with developmental disability, the elderly, large families, farm workers, families with female heads of households, and families and persons in need of emergency shelter. So, not saying a teacher wouldn't qualify in that, but it's not, this element is not directed at, you know, affordable housing for the teachers. It's for those categories.
Yeah, they're just called out in the general conversation because of complaints about salaries and the cost of living and housing and what have you. Absolutely, you're correct with what you have there, but just the general conversation that's always, always discussed. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, Robbie?
No, I'm good.
Chad?
No.
Okay, moving on. So, that was, so I think we can get that letter, Steve, and then we'll take that off. Should the letter say what was represented in your discussion? Rezone Wanda Road between Aberdeen and Collins.
So, what we're looking at there is, you'll see that there's Fitch and Ranch Road, and what we're, what would be proposed, and is extending those four cul-de-sacs, Tacoma, Beckley, Helena, and Portsmouth, out directly to entry points on Wanda, and thereby removing the street of Fitch and Ranch and the Green Belt, or whatever it might be referred to as. So, we did a rough, I mean, a rough estimate. It's approximately two acres total. There's a map here that you would see what it would look like. So, Aberdeen would still enter, so you would have, instead of Aberdeen entering onto Wanda, you would have Aberdeen plus those four between Collins. So, the, those cul-de-sacs could directly do it. So, the yellow areas, if you look at that map, would be potentially developable, and those, now there's, there's issues with that because, you know, everything's gonna have issues. Candidly, all projects are gonna have issues. One of the issues is that we would, this would potentially, because Wanda is considered, it's listed on the master, the county master arterial highway listing, we would have to have that amended to reflect this as such. But, I mean, it's all, it's just a step, another step that would have to be taken. So, there's complications, but not impossible. It's just one of those potential options. We've had said there are 10 to 40 units. That would, again, depend on what sort of density you were allowed to put in, you wanted to put in and zone it for, and the development standards, as Ray mentioned. So, that's what we're talking. We got basically five different plots there that are yellow, that could be utilized, and you could do something. You know, we didn't count for access and, you know, all those kinds of things. You know, we have to make sure that there are driveways and blah, 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 you know. But we're somewhere in the range of 10 to 40 units. You could probably get out of there.
10 to 40 units for the entire yellow area?
Yes.
Okay. And then what about the high-pressure gas line that's on the other side of the wall there?
I believe it's on, under the road itself, so you potentially could have it. I mean, we don't, that's one of the things that would have to be addressed and studied further exactly, if there's an implication or not. I don't, I don't know if there's a requirement. You have to be X amount of feet away from that before you could put a foundation and go deeper than three feet. I don't, I don't know that. We'd have, that's one of the study areas, but it's, again, it's, it's a study area, and it's not, and it's not an impossible. It's, maybe you just have to have a setback of something, and we'd have to figure out what that would be.
Okay.
So, it is a possibility. It's not, it's not an impossible project. It's just one of those things where you have to identify each thing, each step along the way, and you'd have to deal with each of those steps.
Chad?
For this one, how much of this is on the city to begin to implement, like moving the road or changing that?
We wouldn't, and John, if I'm wrong, we would rezone that, and we would have to probably make the efforts to amend the master arterial highway, if I'm not correct. John, tell me. But I think we would still have to, we would have, that would be, onus would be on us, because we are amending the roads, which we have responsibility for.
Steve, it would require, it would require a general plan amendment as well as a zone change.
Yeah. So, that's, that's what we would have to do, and we, there's things we would have to do, but do we have to develop them? No.
So, we don't have to start, you know, pouring new streets or anything. We just have to, as suggested, if this was a viable option, we would just have to amend that general plan and show that it would be feasible.
We would have to make sure that it's feasible and that certain things, steps could be met, and in that process would entail, like, general plan amendment, master, you know, the MPAH adjustment, et cetera.
Okay, so, so if I'm looking at this right, so Fitch and Ranch Road basically goes away because each of those cul-de-sacs would now dump onto Wanda?
Yeah, so what you're seeing there, if you look, that bottom looks like a white swath. That is Wanda. So, the roads would directly empty or enter onto Wanda.
And who owns that property right now?
Who owns what?
The, where the yellow areas.
That's the city.
So, that's actually ours.
The road. It's a city road. That's what we, but we'd have to amend, that's what I'm saying. We have to amend that.
Got it.
Adjustment. So, there has to be adjustment. We do own the Green Belt, so the Green Belt, the wall, there, it's a very thin area actually there. It's not real thick with sidewalk and that. But that's what we own. So, that extended out. I think, Ray, what was the depth from property line to Collins, I mean, to Wanda?
Yeah, what I did was basically extended it the same width as the existing lots there on those cul-de-sac streets. They're approximately 75 feet wide and about 110, 115 feet deep. So, I basically replicated, created those yellow squares, if you will, to match up with what's already existing in terms of...
So, if each one of those were to become one, that would be the 10. That's the bottom.
That's correct.
But you could go with higher density and make them greater. So, that's, that's the rough calculation on back of the envelope, if you will, that we're trying to get to.
Well, did you have a question?
Just a comment that, you know, there's, the city owns very little real estate itself, and we own City Hall and, you know, the library, and we've, we rezoned that five years ago to meet our housing element. We own the Wanda Green Belt that we're turning into the Knolls Green Belt, and this is like the last little piece of property, real estate that the city owns that we could actually, you know, affect something to have happen. So, beyond this, it's rezoning private, other private property. And this is an opportunity for the city to say, "Okay, we're, we're contributing to addressing the problem ourselves, too."
Vince, do you have any comments?
No, not at this time.
Robbie?
The only comment I have is, the only thing that concerns me about this one is increased safety issues, because now you're, you're basically, you know, dumping all those houses right in, directly into Wanda, and, you know, there's no traffic lights or anything along that pathway there. That only concerns me in terms of safety, bringing all those houses in terms of traffic out into Wanda with a stop sign. That's the only reason I bring it up.
Thank you. Couldn't we, well, not we, but I mean, like, just like with rezoning here at the, at the center, if that, if that is something that goes through where you can put different restrictions, couldn't, is it possible that if we decided to add this to the housing element, that if a developer ever did decide to do that, we would stipulate that it needed to have a certain number of stop, stoplights or traffic safety mitigation efforts?
That's the master plan. That's where you, we would have to adjust because Wanda is not, Wanda's the issue, not those individuals. So, there's a certain amount of requirements, so we'd have to go through and amend what we, and see what we can or can't do on Wanda.
But would that satisfy one of Robbie's concerns?
Well, safety is gonna be an issue. Obviously, they're gonna, you know, any development, we'd wanna make sure we approved any development. There would be safety concerns. So, whether you required right-hand turn lanes or whatever you might require along those lines.
And would not the county also require review and approval of any...
Yeah, the master plan arterial highways, that's what I'm saying. That requires county approval, OCTA approval. There's a lot of, yeah, external approvals along those ways. So, that's, that's not something entirely under the control of the city of Villa Park. But it's, like I say, it's not an impossible task. It's just, that's a checkmark. You have to go through and get that review. And they may say, "Well, you have to do this, or you have to do that," or whatever.
Okay. Is that it for everybody on this one? Rezone two Villa, rezone two Villa Park Road parcels to multifamily adjacent to Santiago Creek.
So, if you look at the map there, it is the green area that is, you can't see it very well. It's outlined in red. That's sort of the boundaries of Villa Park. It is, it is a pit. It's the last page. It's page six of those that you've got there, but that's, that's it. My, there's a red, believe it or not, there is a red there line that marks out the parcels, the boundaries. But basically, if, if you'll recall, and I'm gonna do disservice, Councilman Calacut actually had the idea, so I'll let him speak to it. But you'll recall several, a year or two ago, I believe, I don't know exactly when, on Cannon and Santiago, we were approached by, for a project to fill in some of the gravel pit over there with fill dirt that was coming from elsewhere in the county. We negotiated a deal with them. It's in the city of Orange. So, that project, eventually, they are going to intend to fill that up and then basically entitle it for residential and sell it or for whatever. So, it's the same exact concept there, is you would develop this property along there, which is, again, there's a difference here between the pit south of Collins, on Collins, is that this is within the standard boundaries of Villa Park. So, this is clearly something we have control over zoning. So, this is something we have the opportunity. So, it is, if you look to, one of the issues there is Villa Park Road is actually at a much lower grade than the houses that are on, that are above it on, I can't see the patrician. patrician, my, my eyes, thank you. So you, you could develop, develop potentially a multi-story building there without, and still be lower than the grade of the, of the, now, you probably would have to elevate the property up, I mean, the, the pit, and fill it in up to at least the level of Villa Park Road, and what that requirement is, and then there's going to be environmental issues that we'll have to make sure, flood control issues, whatever, but then the water district obviously owns it, but it is not in use as an active parcel for water district, so at this point. So I, I'm not sure there would be, I don't want to speak for them, but certainly it's, it's something, if I were in the water district, I would be listening to any offers to, to do whatever, because it's not something that they're, you know, they're doing something actively with. Now, there are some flood control issues that we would probably have to address, there are probably, given it's been vacant for, laid there for a long time, there's probably some environmental issues that we're going to have to address. But you recall, they do it through this very similar step, exactly the same kind of thing on, and they got it approved over on Villa Park Road and Cannon on that project. So I'll defer to, to Councilman Collins, Councilman Colacott.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Let me speak.
You speak close to the microphone, if you could.
Oh, yes. If you look at this, this photo, on the far right side, you can see there's an area in green, and that is the developer's proposed project that our city manager referred to, and that is where the, the, in fact, that, that project is addressed in an article in the current edition of the Century. What the developer is proposing there is that he's going to allow tipping people to bring in clean fill and dump it there, and charge them a tipping fee for, you know, every yard of clean fill that he dumped, that they dumped there. So he'll generate revenue just from filling the pit, which is quite sizable. And then once, and he will ensure that during the process of filling that it's properly compacted, so that once it's brought up to an appropriate grade, then he's going to sell off the lots for development. The concept here, in the area that our city man, is addressed here, and this alternative is similar, where we have a, we have a pit, we could also, or the water district could also allow that to be filled with excess dirt, and there's a surprising amount of dirt that needs to be disposed of from various development projects in the county. For example, think of folks that build a swimming pool, what do you do with the dirt from digging the hole for your swimming pool? So those people would bring their dirt here, pay a tipping fee, the revenue could be used to help pay for any other infrastructure improvements, and also for the, to ensure the proper compaction. And then, once this area is filled, it'd be twenty-two acres of developable property, which itself has a considerable value. And again, that area is below, considerably below the back of the lots on that, on patrician that back up to this pit, so there's the opportunity to protect the view sheds for those residences by, in developing. Just a little bit of history, I think it was in the, the late seventies, this, this was an active sand and gravel operation, and a number of our residents that are, that still exist, remember that operation. And it stopped quite abruptly when the state adopted new regulations that would require sand and gravel operations in other mines to develop reclamation plans. Basically, the reclamation plans require you to restore the, the area back to an area similar to the, the pre-develop, pre-mining conditions, or something aesthetically pleasing. And the operator of that sand and gravel operation being so large did not have the resources to do that, so they just ceased operation. And what we've been left with is a couple, some pretty unsightly pits on both sides of Villa Park Road. And this is one of the main entrances to Villa Park, so part of the benefit of developing this, this property for a high-density development would be to improve the aesthetics of, of that parcel. So I think there's opportunities for wins all the way around on this. You know, one of the things that I've, I've thought of with, with this concept is that the comments that we received from this, from the HCD, is that we've done little in our housing element update to address the needs of our seniors, and we have the, we have, I think, a, a large portion of our population is elderly. Certainly, are the, I think the median population, or median age in Villa Park is fifty-three. And it'd be great personally if we could, to see if we could develop this as a senior development, you know, high-density senior development, provide some benefits for the seniors, but also there are, there are grant monies available for seniors, senior developments like this. So I think there are a lot of opportunities, there are certainly a lot of challenges to try to develop for the city to work with the water district to develop this, but I think it's something that meets a, a city need, a county, and a countywide need, and a state need for low-cost, affordable housing. So, and I think this would have nothing but a positive benefit for our city in many ways, so, anyway, that's my thought on that, that option, when I, and I've discussed it with a few people, and haven't been able to identify any problems with it yet, outside of the barriers of just trying to work with the water district and the flood control district and so forth to try to make this all happen.
So thank you for your comments. One thing I want to point out is that the city is not allowed to dictate what kind of housing gets put anywhere, so being that, I agree with you on the needs of seniors, I am the District Three representative on the Senior Citizens Advisory Council, so I'm extremely aware of, of a lot of the needs of the seniors, both in our city and neighboring cities, but trying to determine if this could be a good senior citizen, senior home is beyond the scope of what we're supposed to be doing right here, we're supposed to just see the feasibility for affordable housing, and yes, seniors do fall in that, but the city cannot, my understanding is the city cannot dictate what kind of housing it becomes. Is that correct?
Yeah, but the...
Hold on, please, I was asking John Douglas. Is that correct? John?
I, I'm sorry.
I'll repeat the question. So the city cannot dictate what kind of low-income housing gets built?
Yes, in, in other words, restricting it to, to only senior housing, yes.
Okay, thank you. When you say that there's a developer that's working on this, can you show me on this? Because my eyes, I think, are bad.
It's the area immediately east of the Blue Ribbon Nursery property.
Okay, so that, and that is not ours, that is, that is...
Correct, and that's in the city of Orange.
City of Orange.
Okay, and so, refresh, or, help me with this, I thought that there was a huge lawsuit with Orange Park Acres.
No, that, that lawsuit was respect to the Trails, or what are they calling that?
Correct.
The, the further east, the east of Cannon, this is west of Cannon.
Okay.
So that, while, while development of both was sort of probably, the improvement on the east side would probably increase the value on the west side, it is a standalone project, it is not something that's required to develop the east side in order to have the west side.
That was my...
Different developers, different, different owners, different projects.
Okay, that was my next question, is this developer for the area that Councilman Colacott just pointed out, on the other side of the Blue Ribbon Nursery, that is completely different developer than what's going on with the...
Yes, yes.
Yep, okay, and then...
I forget the name, is it Trails at Santiago Creek, I think that's what it's called, Trails at Santiago Creek?
Yeah, it's the Sully, the Sully Miller project.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, this is a different property than that, correct?
That's right.
And this has approval from the city of Orange, so this is not something that's by referendum that other projects have been stalled.
Okay, so there's no objection that we know of, this is a, this is going...
Well, I don't want to say there's no objection, but I think it's moving forward.
Okay.
Let me just say it that way.
A lot of objection, by the way.
I would assume there is, what I'm saying, it's, there's nothing impeding this from continuing with, I think Councilman Colacott said that there's, he's, he's receiving these, these tipping fees or whatever, so that he can eventually sell it and build...
That was his plan, he came forward to us, and that was his plan.
Okay, and have you spoken to him, this particular, who, who, who is the developer on this one?
Actually, we did speak with him a year and a half, two years ago, he came to us with this project.
We negotiated an agreement with him, you recall, the council...
No, no, I'm, I'm asking about this new suggested idea.
No, no, he has nothing to do with this property.
Okay, that was...
He owns the property, that basin on the east side of Blue Ribbon Nursery, and that's all.
Okay, I was just wondering if you had spoken with this developer about the proposed area that's on our suggestion options?
No, just, you know, I just referenced that other project in that, it's the same general concept in terms of, you know, filling an existing mine.
Cool, okay, that, does anyone else have a comment on this?
I, I do, I've, I've actually personally visited this site when this came up, both from Villa Park Road, as well as from Blue Ribbon Nursery, as well as from Hughes, taking a look at a lot of different factors. Obviously, engineering is, is going to be a big, big piece of the puzzle here, but correct me if I'm wrong, this is owned by our water district, Serrano Water District.
The Orange County Water District, not Serrano, Orange County Water District, very different entity.
Okay, thank you, thanks for that clarification. It is not currently under private development, only the area east of basically the Blue Ribbon, Blue Ribbon Nursery.
No, it is public lands.
Thank you, okay, that's all I had, and it's an exciting piece of, of a puzzle that we're trying to solve here, and I say exciting only from the standpoint of, it's not smack and middle of neighborhoods, but, and it may provide some relief to get to that 296. Thank you.
And is there, would, would, would the Orange County Water District, this is your best guess, would, would that be something you think that they would be in agreement with? Is it, is it...
I, I have not approached them, and like I said, I, it's not a, it's not currently in use, so I'm sure for a price, everything is probably discussable. If I'm the water district, I'm probably thinking, well, what's, what do they get out of the deal, and maybe it's just relief from liability and reclamation. I mean, there's a lot of issues that they may say, hey, I'll sign off if, if whoever takes responsibility, you know, whatever. So there's a lot of discussion points, and there's a lot to be done with that, so I, I don't know where their position is, I don't even want to speak for them.
No, I, sorry, I just didn't know.
I would offer, though, too, to the extent that you're doing a project that is potentially, this is, this is potentially a, an expensive project, because you have a lot of environmental issues. So if I'm a developer, having been working with developers in the county in my previous role, the larger the project is, the better it is for them to return their costs. So they may, so if you were going to say, well, build a hundred units, they may say, well, I'll build six hundred, because I can make an ROI quicker.
Right.
Than, than building a hundred. So I'm just sharing with you their mindset, they're going to look at where their return is and what their, so a larger unit is, they can spread the costs over more units and make return, and, and then they can say, okay, typically in a development like that, they may say, okay, we're going to say forty-five percent of the units will be affordable, we're going to build six hundred, but only forty-five will be, forty-five percent, or whatever, and that's, that's a negotiable discussion, and, you know, and that's how they may arrange some of their financings and whatever. So they may come forward, and depending on the developer, have a very creative approach to dealing with something like this, which may or may not include fully affordable versus non-fully affordable. I mean, you, you know, they, they may say, well, tell you what, because I need to make money on the deal, I'm going to say that at least half of the units, or a certain percentage, will be market rate. And, and that's very typical, because if you go up, if you go up, a good example is if you go up on the fifty-seven freeway at, in Lambert, and you look over in the right, there's a whole big development in there, there's affordable housing units in there that you have no idea, because it's all part of the whole mixed use. So it's a mix, it's a mixed use, it's a residential and retail and commercial, and what they've done is, not every unit is, you know, you're, you're not creating the projects, if you will, you're creating a living area, and some of those units are affordable, some are not, they may use vouchers from the housing authority to help make that happen, it's typically a mesh work of financing, so a developer is going to be pretty creative, and there are people who specialize in this type of project, that, that spend a lot of time and really do some major projects, but I'm just going to share with you, they probably aren't going to look at this at a small scale. If they're going to look at something, they're going to look at, what is our maximum potential return on something like this, and the larger a project, the more they're going to, they're more they're going to be attractive to them.
Well, and that, I don't take an issue with that, my, my question really goes to, back to this whole idea of feasibility, and, you know, if we were to, to utilize this, which could potentially meet our entire allocation number, but again, if in those eight years nobody comes forward to say, hey, it's a great idea, I'm going to build six hundred units, so my return on investment, you know, makes sense, then would this put us in a situation that perhaps HCD makes us come back and revisit?
I think if it was our only one, but that's part of the issue.
Yeah.
If, if it were the only thing we had, yeah, I think you're, I think you're absolutely right, if they say, you know, if there's a fatal flaw, or we can't, we can't show potential progress or something.
Okay.
Yes, by all means, they may look at and say, you haven't done anything in two years, three years, four years, nothing's happening, it's just laying vacant, and you just put it on there as a, as a filler, then, you know, no pun intended, but if you put it on something like that, they're going to, they're going to want to see some sort of movement, I'm assuming. John, would that be an accurate assessment?
Yes, yes.
Is there a ratio that has to be met, like, for instance?
They may, they might want to see project on, you know, have, do they have entitlements? Are there, you know, are there, it's zoned, but do you have an agreement with the water district? I mean, there, there's lots of meters that they could use as performance measures, and I, I don't know what those, I don't want to speak for HCD, but they may want to see certain checkmarks at some point during the process. It might take longer, a project like this could take longer than five to ten years, and maybe that's a discussion you have to have with HCD, saying, look, it can happen, but it might not happen within the eight-year period, this might be, you might have to grant us some leeway here, but that's, I, I don't have that.
Right.
Not knowing what the developer's got in mind right now.
Chad?
So I think this proposal, more than any other, really highlights the disparity in two trains of thoughts on, well, let's just say, my side of the aisle, where we want to provide affordable housing, but we also don't want to invade open space and the environmental aspect of a terrain and take that away from our community. It's a, it's something that, there are very many other cities that are facing this, I know in Huntington Beach, and Newport, San Clemente, they've got this, their own RINA numbers, and yet they're fighting against the Coastal Commission, saying environmentally, we cannot develop anymore in these areas, and I, I guess it just really highlights that this number and how we get to it is really painful and may not be a great idea. And I, I know, we're all struggling with this in one form or another, for me in particular, I, this proposal really brings it home as a, I don't want to invade a green space and take, and when you say there are going to be environmental issues, those are not insignificant, that is a, a space that's been that way for many years, and...
I, I would just offer, if people have not visited this area, obviously stay outside the fence, it's a fenced-in area, it's not an open public park, it's not an open space, it is a wild area where trees amongst rubble exist. This isn't like a hillside with a trail that you can mountain bike on, or that there is, to my knowledge, a protected species in any way, shape, or form, in fact, what I did see were a number of situations down there potentially where you had mosquito breeding grounds. That, to me, is a concern, I'm a hundred percent on board, I think we need to protect our open spaces, I'm so thankful that Irvine Company has made agreements with the county and other developers have, but in this particular situation, this is, in my humble opinion, my personal opinion, not something that is of a tremendous value to either residents of the area or animals that live in this area. And I just, I would, again, I'm, everybody is entitled to their own opinion, please go visit it, you can go to the end of the street by Blue Ribbon Nursery, or walk along Villa Park Road to get a better point of view, maybe even some homeowners, if you know them, might offer a, a point of view from their home on patrician, but again, that point of view is looking way down about a hundred feet, just on, by sheer estimation.
So I would just offer that the environmental study is absolutely going to be required here, there's no question.
Of course, of course.
And we don't know what habitats are there, and you never know what they're going to find or whatnot they're going to find in there, and that's, whether it's fenced off or not, that will still be a habitat restoration issue for a developer, and that, there's always mitigation issues that you have to make and whatever.
Of course.
So I, I can't say whatever is or isn't there, but I... So I can't say whatever is or isn't there, but I absolutely, 100% sure that an environmental assessment will have to be done by somebody.
Of course, an EIR has to be done.
If I can finish, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I don't mind.
So I hadn't quite finished what I was talking about there. I have been to this area when we had significant rains and it fills with water and it is beautiful. There are going to be some drainage issues in terms of how that's being used right now. What I was coming to on my point was that none of these options that we're looking at are going to make any of us really happy. This one in particular is going to make me a little bit more uncomfortable while some of the others make, might make some others more uncomfortable. And we're going to be under the gun to pick one of these and then trying to decide. And it really is important for everybody. Vince's point is a good one. Go out and look at it. Try to picture it in multiple different seasons and how it looks in different, in different times of the year. And then be prepared for a lot of pushback from environmentalists and from the people in the state who are actually also pushing the same RINA number to say, we want this, but we don't want this. It's the same, it's a really tough decision. So now I'm done.
Todd?
I was a resident here in Villa Park when this was still operating. And when they stopped operating, the operator basically abandoned the mine. So what you're looking at is a mine that, a mine that was not restored environmentally or any other way. It was the, you know, there was, perhaps the Orange County Water District did some rest, or some measures to protect the banks. I'm not sure who did that, but you can see on the extreme west side that there's some significant erosion that's occurring. So this is not a, this is a highly disturbed site. It's not a, in any way pristine or natural condition. So, and I, my experience in working on EIR is that that would be taken into consideration. In terms of, you know, this would not be, I think what the city manager has pointed out is that whatever we, whatever we choose, we're probably going to choose several of these alternatives. And we're going to be working on them in parallel so that at the end of the day, we will have the opportunity to show significant progress. And on this project, it may be making some progress in getting agreements with the water district and with the flood control district to do whatever improvements are needed to prevent flooding, environmental work. Other sites, you know, there's going to be other issues that we're going to have to address. But all the alternatives are going to require barriers to be overcome. There will be challenges. But we should, you know, I guess my view is we should do as was, we were recommended to do is pursue several of these and get some, make progress.
Thank you. No, we definitely just, Robbie, just one second. Need to have the feedback from residents. And as, as the resident biologist here, although it may not look pretty, it is definitely an ecosystem that disturbing it would, would have impact. So not everything has to be green and beautiful for it to be appreciated. Just want to say that. But, but what about, because I see here on this rezone to Villa Park Road parcels to multifamily, and we have, because it's 22 acres, we have 122 all the way up to 901 units. What would the possibility be of perhaps only zoning, rezoning a little portion of that so that maybe it met just the 122 portion? And then we could satisfy the rest of the numbers with some of these other options?
I think what Ray had mentioned, we would have to specify in the development requirements, right, Ray? That you would have to specify what density you would allow?
That's correct.
So in density, you would control the number.
Okay.
Yeah. And that, that number, Mayor, the range of numbers, that was gross acreage.
Yeah.
That does not include what we would eventually, if this site was to develop, that's, you know, you would have to net out areas for streets, open space. It's not going to be all units. So, you know, the number's probably going to be significantly lower. The unit yield would be much lower, given the topography and, you know, the streets that you would have to introduce as part of the development, all of that stuff. So, yeah, the 100, the 900 units, that's the high end in terms of yield, but it'll probably be significantly less when everything is said and done.
Thank you. This may be a silly question and maybe not appropriate or applicable, but let's pretend that we did take a small portion of this, one of the parcels there. And as part of the housing element, would we, as the city and the zoning, be able to make it so that if a developer did purchase that to build 122 units or 75 units, that they also had to build some sort of like sports park maybe? Or, you know, a park of some kind?
Right. You could definitely do that. I mean, I think what the key, would you zone the whole area and then you set the development standards about what density you require? Then the developer would come in and say, whatever. But to the extent that you require amenities, you are making the cost of the project go up.
Okay, so then there's no more, it's no longer...
And if the cost of the project goes up, the number of developers interested goes down.
Exactly.
And restrictions.
Yeah. So if it becomes cost prohibitive, you're going to have, and that's literally the problem. We had a, like a $30 million NOFA, which is a Notice of Funding Availability. We had no bidders in the county because the, you know, you've got to find the right mix and the right property. And their developers will say, hey, I'm not messing with something that I can't deal with. And it's not going to, you know, if they're going to require this, that, and the other thing, and everything you, you know, yes, you can require open space, you can require recreation facilities, you can require passive parks, you can require X number of extra parking and all sorts of things. And all, you can do that, but then you're making it to the point where a developer's saying, well, no, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. What they would want to do then is to increase the density.
Yeah.
Right.
And there is, you know, there's also the option of density bonus where, yeah, will allow you to go higher in terms of density in exchange for lowering the parking lot or parking space requirements, for example. So there's give and take.
And then that would be the project-specific issues that we'd be dealing with.
Mm-hmm. Robbie?
Mayor, thank you. You know, I think there's other things to consider as well. The significant increase in traffic on not only Villa Park Road, but Center and Wanda to gain access to the town center, which is something I think we've all been, you know, uncomfortable with in the past. If I remember correctly, a lot of the folks on the city council, the current city council, didn't like the fact that Sully Miller was going to generate a whole bunch of truck traffic on Villa Park Road, therefore, you know, causing problems for us environmentally and maintenance-wise and so forth. So just want to bring that up as something to consider as we consider these different options. And looking at not only the traffic, the noise, the environmental issues, and also everything that you all have brought up. I'm just only bringing that up because I think the public and everybody, as we consider these options, need to take all that into consideration down the road.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, the last one. Allow more than two ADUs per lot in selected areas or large lots.
I think this was mentioned prior to, and that would be something where we would, the larger lots potentially identify and say, lots over X amount of acreage, and whatever that number the council would choose, can put X number of, besides the ADU and the J ADU, they could put two more or whatever the number is. And you're going to be able to come up with whatever the standard is. Again, we don't have a number there because that would be dependent upon the parameters set by the council. But that's certainly an option that could yield units. What number that is, I can't tell you.
Could we get that number? I mean, is that something you could put like a little spreadsheet together?
Well, I mean, I would have to say if, it's like a what if. If it's units over a five acre, I mean, a one acre process, all parcels over one acre can now build an extra unit, that's, we can get a number. But I need some parameters to say otherwise, it's...
What I'm asking for is, would it be possible to see like a breakdown of what properties of different sizes we have so that we could see if we wanted this section, we can add a certain number of ADUs to, let's say there's 24 properties that are over, you know, a certain acreage?
Yeah, we can do that.
Then we could have a spreadsheet to at least put numbers on and be able to...
Yeah. That'd be, that's a good, that's a good point. We'll do, we'll pull that together.
Any other comments on this last item?
Not at this time.
I do have general comment about the whole overall, whenever you're ready for that.
I'm ready. Ready if you are.
The, Steve, the one concern that I had was that there weren't a lot of folks at the meeting tonight, and we didn't get a lot of public comments. So what I would like to suggest is that we build a communications plan to educate the community on this whole aspect and get things out there in the feeder. I'd like to see us have a communications plan to our civic organizations so that they, the members of those groups can be informed on what's going on. I would use the social media along with print media, and I'd get something out to the school district and the water district, as you've indicated. But I think we need a, an extensive, you know, communications plan because I worry that a lot of people just really don't know what's going on. And I, you know, I'm hoping that we'll get a lot of input between now and the time that we have the next meeting so that it's more fruitful. But I'm worried that we're making decisions in somewhat of a vacuum.
Yeah, we will. Thank you, Councilman. We've been thinking along those lines, and so I appreciate what you're saying there. We have a number of items that we're, approaches we're going to take. You'll be seeing the feeder. This will be all put online. Secondarily, we're going to be putting something out, rather extensive, in the next, I've already talked to the Sentry, which goes to all residents in Villa Park, and that will have a pretty detailed process and the options as well laid out. So what the timeframe is and so, sort of a FAQ, a frequently asked question type of thing with, with the options that are being presented, the timeframes and contact information, et cetera. That goes to every household in Villa Park, regardless of club affiliation, social group or whatever. We'll also be talking to all the various social groups, or not social groups, the service groups, I meant, sorry. And we'll be getting, making sure that they're well aware. And very candidly, we send out public notices to all the interested activist parties as well. They get notices of all our public hearings and whatnot. So they're watching. A lot of them just simply aren't showing up because candidly, just the progress report last week, I had two emails from activist groups, the Public Law Center and the Kennedy Commission. So I know that people are watching from the outside, not necessarily residents, but people are watching. But we certainly, we're going to try and reach every resident and sort of getting something in their mailbox. That's probably the best way they can, that I can reach them. And I know on May 1st, that will come out, you know, May 1st or 2nd when the Sentry. But I've already had a discussion with, with the group there, and they're very interested and very, you know, open to the idea, and they're all, they're all planning on it. It's just a matter of the timeframes and we're working on getting something, and it'll probably be out in the next week or so in their hands to put into the next edition.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we get as much visibility as we can to the public for this because, so hopefully we don't have to, the five of us don't have to make this decision by ourselves.
Absolutely. I agree. Thank you. I know I put it on my social media. I'd like to, you probably are already going to do this, Steve, but can we have copies of both the packet that you prepared, you and John prepared, and the map and have it in City Hall? So if somebody wants to stop by and check it out? And then maybe we can run it on, longer on the loop, on the streaming, so that way people...
And we'll be running special feeders just with that, with the links, and that will be attached so people who don't want to print it out or just want to look at it online have that ability. So, so we'll get the message out and a lot of people will hopefully respond.
I hope so.
And I would, I would encourage all of you councilmen to use your social media opportunities to, to get the information out because I think that's what we're looking for. Obviously, the council doesn't want to approve anything that has no public input. We want, we want public input and you'll see, that's why the point of this, and then we didn't make the decision that we're coming back on May 11th, and we're widely publicizing that. So I think you're going to start seeing some, you know, as much as we can do to try and generate interest, we'll try and do. I would hope that you guys all do the same on your social media and we'll, we'll make copies available. There are, we had copies available tonight, hoping that people might show, but we'll see. Hopefully can.
No, I think this is way too important for us to assume that everyone knows about it. So I appreciate you taking the extra efforts. And are there any other comments from any council members? I'd like to thank staff and John for, I know, the many, many hours that has gone into preparing this and the many hours that you're going to be continuing to work on it. So thank you very much for the work and the, and what you've done thus far. And we're at the beginning. And if there's no other comments?
Let me just, on the 11th, we're coming back. It's at 5:30. And at 5:30, at that meeting, we're going to ask the council to weigh in and say, yeah, we're good with these options. So there will be voting and actions taken on the 11th. So, you know, you, when you talk, it's not just a matter of the public coming to us, it's a matter of you talking to the public so that you guys can have some sense of what you want to vote. Because we're going to ask you to come forward and say, I'm okay with these, I'm not okay with that, I want this in there, I don't want that in there, because we're going to have to start putting that into crystallized formula of a, something to submit to HCD.